Okay, it is 6:00 PM and I call the meeting of the public schools to order for November 14th, 2022, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts public meeting laws. Do we have anyone who's making a recording today? Great, and if you could state your name.
You'll be good.
Perfect, very much. Public record or public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes of length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@fama.k12.mas.us. Do we have any public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none moving right along. Update on district safety back door. Let me introduce Paul Stephanelli. He is our safety coordinator for the district.
So I'm gonna go over basically what the seven safety monitors do. We did get all seven hired as of last month. And their basic responsibilities when they come in in the morning is to conduct a check of the building and the grounds of the schools to ensure that there's nobody hanging around the school. There's nobody in the school that doesn't belong in the school. Check the doors, make sure all the doors are secure before classes begin and students arrive. On the arrival of students, they stand out front with the administration of the school and they assist with the arrival of students, ensuring that nobody else enters the building besides those that are supposed to be coming into the building, staff and students. As class day begins, they conduct another check of the building to ensure that all the doors have been secured since the arrival of the students. They walk around the grounds, they walk around the building, ensuring that everything is the way it's supposed to be to make sure that everybody is safe inside the building. But then check in with the administration of the particular school. At the Renner, the school has little events that take place to see if there's any specific security issues that may arise from whatever might be happening on a particular day. After that, they would go around the building just to continue with their tours of the building, check the grounds. Lunchtime, they assist with kids going outside to do their recess. They make sure there's nobody else hanging around outside when the kids are outside, ensuring that everybody's safe out there. As the day goes on, they continue with just checks of the building. Towards the end of the day, when the kids are getting picked up, they go back outside. They assist with the student pickup during the day, during different parts of the day. They have other tasks that they'll perform such as checking doors, just to make sure that the doors are closing properly on their own. Some doors, when you open them and you let them close, they just don't close. They need to be pulled closed. We're looking to get all of those fixed so that that doesn't become an issue. They're checking the goal buckets, checking doors on the inside. Make sure that the classroom doors are secured properly the way they're supposed to be throughout the day. There's safety bags that each classroom is supposed to have. They check to make sure that those safety bags are present, evacuation maps, that type of stuff. They're just going around the building and checking for that type of stuff. Those are essentially their tasks per day. There may be other things that come up along the way that, you know, come up, just whatever happens. And people have come on the grounds, they've been asked to leave. They go out and they talk to them and ask them to leave, let them know that it's school time and that they're not allowed to be on the property during the school hours. Those types of things have come up frequently for some schools, not so much for others. That's essentially what the monitors do. We go into the Alice training now, working with the police department to get the Alice training continued. Due to COVID, the last couple of years, there hasn't been any Alice training. So we're going back seventh, eighth and ninth grade. We're gonna do the training now because usually at seventh grade, but because we haven't been able to do it the last couple of years, we're gonna do seventh, eighth and ninth. So I have BSRO, he's already scheduled some times to do the training for the seventh and eighth grades, and he's working on the ninth grade. I'm also asking the police department to have the school liaison officers come in to the elementary schools during their school community meetings so that they can reinforce the idea of teachers, calling a teacher when an incident occurs, just to reinforce that that's what they're supposed to do. I'm working with the fire department and the police department to get them both in at the same time during one of those community meetings. We're also looking to upgrade or step up the drills. So we have some drills coming up in the fall. We're gonna do drills at each school with students and staff. It's gonna be a basic drill this time. The next drill after that, we're gonna step it up a little bit. It's gonna be a couple of little enhanced obstacles to make people think so that they're not just going by the routine of, oh, it's a drill, we're just gonna lock off the door. We know what's gonna happen. So we might have, you know, a door that's blocked, but we'll have somebody standing there saying, yeah, you can't use this door. What are you gonna do? Or they may pull a student from class so that they go do their student class list and they're checking their students, and there may be a student that isn't there. How do they react to that and what do they do with that? So that's some of the things that are coming in the spring drills. After that, that's essentially everything for the Alice training. We are looking into some Alice training for teachers so that we can have teachers go to train the trainer class. That's probably going to be next summer because that's probably the next time we'll be able to get somebody here to do it and have the availability it requires to do it. I'm also looking into safety audits for the, each of the buildings. There are some companies out there that'll come out and they'll conduct an audit of the building. Most of them are conducting a full audit, which means they're gonna do top to bottom, everything. Air quality, writing quality, computer systems, how we handle files, all that type of stuff. I'm trying to find that there's ones that can kind of piecemeal and get what it is we're looking for more than just a full top to bottom audit. Also looking into the insurance companies. I was informed by one of these companies that your insurance carrier may be able to do that risk assessment. I haven't heard back from them yet. I'm waiting on determination from them as to whether or not we can do it. In the meantime, I have begun doing security assessments of the buildings myself, and that's gonna be a basic security type of assessment. I'm not getting involved in lighting, air quality and that type of stuff. I don't have any experience in that, but building security would be what I'd be looking at. That's essentially what I have.
Thank you so much. Do we'd like to add anything before your questions?
No, I think we've been very, very busy and moving along quickly. I'm very pleased.
Any questions?
Do you still, are you in charge of fire drills or is that the fire department's?
Both sets of drills are being, once the police department is still doing the Alice drills. We're gonna eventually take it over, but as of now, they still conduct drills. Fire department conducts the fire department drills. They'll certainly notify me when they're gonna take place and we'll coordinate whether or not we can add any of those enhanced things that we're gonna do. The fire department had suggested that they were gonna do the same thing. They were considering adding some issues to it to see how people react to it.
And when you do the drills with the little kids, do you have a calming, some way to gently message them that? I mean, I just wonder if little kids get, you know, nervous or excited or is that part of your protocol?
Well, when they, when they.
Or the teachers do it maybe?
When they do the drill, they announce that it is a drill. The teachers are the ones that would be teaching the students at that age level. There are some programs out there that can be used. We haven't used them as of yet, and they're basically kind of like a hide and seek type of thing where they pretend it's hide and seek and that's how they show them how they're gonna, how they're gonna do it or follow a leader type of game. We don't do that as of yet at this point. It's just follow your teacher directions. It would be up to the teacher obviously to handle how calm the students would be during a drill. Obviously during an actual event, we can't, we can't practice an actual event. So it'd be difficult to say.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Andrea.
Thank you for that. I guess I have a couple of questions. The first one is, you were talking earlier about some of the duties of the school safety monitors, and one of the things that you said is that there's already been some situations where they've had to ask people to leave the property. What are the protocols around having those staff members approaching people who are? I'm trying to be wary of not asking for something that you can't divulge, but I'm assuming that there's a protocol in place for approaching and making sure that they're safe in doing that.
So they should be notifying the administration's office, the school office, letting them know that they're going out to somebody on the property, whatever the situation is, notifying that they're going out there. They have a radio. So we go out there, we speak to them, they ask them what their purpose is on the school grounds. They have no purpose, they just remind them that the school's property is closed during the school day and ask them to, if they have an issue, then they can certainly notify the office to go back into the school and have the police deal with it from there. That would be their expectation.
Great. And then some of the responsibilities that you were talking about that they, you know, I like the breakdown of what they do during the day, but then there's other times when it's more flexible. I would assume that there's quite a few differences between our, what they would be doing at the elementary level, especially during the greeting when the buses are dropping off versus our upper grades. Are there different things that they're doing there? I think one of the things that was coming to mind for me is we talked a lot about vaping issues and the fact that we're not able to have enough staff to kind of keep up on that. Is that something that would fit into their purview?
They would not be looking into that. I mean, obviously if they saw that, they would say something to the students, you know, that's not allowed, but they're not gonna get involved in anything beyond that. They would bring it to the principal or to whoever it is that is available to bring it to and have them handle that.
So that would just be tangentially if they notice something.
Correct.
And then the last thing I wanted to ask about was, I know that new, well, I'm not sure if it was new, but I think it's new for at least the school committee to be part of the safety advisory committee. So have you been meeting with that committee and sort of what is their role in conjunction with your role?
Would that be the meeting we had last week? Yes. Obviously, the agenda was established by the superintendent and myself. I mean, we do that once a quarter, but I do have monthly safety meetings with each school, which I'm responsible for the agenda for those meetings and we discuss different things that are going on at the different schools to determine the best ways to resolve those issues. And then when we go to the district-wide meeting, if it's something that's, could be handled or could be a problem in other schools that we just didn't realize it, it can be brought up at those meetings and discussed at those.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the information, Paula. I think my questions are for Lori. So my first is things like the, like the doors that you mentioned that they shut, but they don't 100% shut all the time and even potentially like new things that might be coming down the road that we think that the auditor might, or was it auditor? Yeah, it's like fine. Like, do we have lines built in for that kind of stuff or is that gonna be additional? Like, will we need to?
Yeah, that's great. So two things, we still have money in one of the budget lines that was created a few years ago around safety.
Okay.
Items, so there's still, so obviously we'll exhaust that first and go with the, the doors, a few more fobs. We're looking at a couple of cameras. There's, actually you said you don't do lighting, but you did notice that we may need some lighting on one part of a building. So, so far, it's been minimal. I think all of that'll be covered under, and then we'll have to go from there.
Awesome. And then my second question is about the idea. I think there's always been some confusion about which parts of the campuses are open during the school day, if any, because, you know, and we even had a conversation talking about pickleball, that if the courts are redone at the high school and we want them to be available for people to use if the students aren't using them. So do we need to look at that language? Do we have language for which pieces are open when so that everybody gets all of the monitors are having the same message and everybody knows exactly what the rules are? Or do we need to update that if we're gonna have like a pickleball?
So we have discussed at the high school, we'll go back and review the policy.
Currently, the policy states anything during school hours is for students only. So I, I think that we'll definitely have to go back to policy and have that discussion as far as pickleball at the high school or even here.
Well, these aren't ours.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I was thinking about those particularly.
And it works really well here. I mean, there's a, they have a system, there's a whiteboard and the PE teachers are going to use it. They, they just mark on the hours in which it's gonna be used for schools and then the community does not use them during that time, but otherwise they're open the rest of the time.
Okay.
And it's in close proximity.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question, sorry, sorry. Finish your thought.
No, I just wanna make sure that, that we have a clear, that we have clear directions for what's open and what's not when, so that they all know what they're doing and we're all on board. Because then also, you know, then I've got the wrong message too because when my kids were at elementary school, we were allowed to play on the playground during the school day as long as it wasn't recess. And, you know, I don't wanna be relaying inaccurate information when people ask me that.
Let's look into it and ensure that we're very clear in the written as well as what we're proposing. But because it goes so well here, I'd like to see the community to be able to access the high school to support the pickleball.
Especially because of the proximity.
Right, because of the proximity of where it's at. You know, we wanna try to bring the community in as much.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, but I'm just not sure how to say.
No, it's fine. No, I, you know, I'm gonna park my question because I don't wanna fall down that rabbit hole.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions for Paula or Lori? I'm seeing that. Thank you so much for the update. It's wonderful to hear about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, presentation of tiered focus monitoring.
And Ryan, am I able to share my screen?
No, there we go. We have it.
All right. All right. Yes. Okay, so thank you for allowing me an opportunity to provide you with an update of where we are with tiered focus monitoring. I know a while back I gave an overview as the process was starting. So to recap, we were able to have the, the first part of the, first part of the three-year cycle. So it was during the 2021, 22 school year, the public schools participated in the tiered focus monitoring review conducted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but their Office of Public School Monitoring, you may have heard it referred to as the PMS, PSM. So the purpose of the tiered focus monitoring review is to monitor the compliance with the regulatory requirements. Then this one focused on special education and civil rights. So the regularly monitored standards are divided into two groups. There's Group A, which is a one set of universal standards, and Group B, which is.
Sorry.
So, and so. Group A is a one set of universal standards and Group B is another set of universal standards. So we, this particular three-year, as we're in this phase of the three-year cycle, we are in Group B. So it's the universal standards that get addressed were licensure and professional development, parent, student and community engagement, facilities and classroom observations, oversight, time and learning, and equal access. And so as you see that we're tiering level three and that's just when I look at other elements of data collection that is collected through the Department of Education. So the different components of the review included the self-assessment phase. So that was the district review of special education and civil rights documentation for required elements in which we uploaded quite a bit of the documents for the department to review. The district reviewed sample, a sampling of special education student discipline records. And upon completion of the self-assessment, the district submitted the data into the department for their review. Then they came, the department came out and did an onsite visit. And during that phase of the interview, they interviewed administrators, instructional and support staff. They interviewed the parent, the special ed parent advisory council. They reviewed additional documentation of special education and civil rights student files as well as our policies and procedures. They did a survey out to our parents, our special education parents. I'm very happy to report that they said they got the highest turnout out of parents in Fama than in any other district. So kudos to Fama. And let's see, they also reviewed the records, the samples that were shared, and then they did an op, so they went out and they interviewed staff and then they went out onsite and they observed all of our spaces, our special education spaces, where related services, OTP, speech are provided, our ELL services, and they looked at the buildings across all seven schools. So what is that actually? That's right, the slide that I need, right? So then what they did is they gave us a draft. They allowed us to review that draft and I think we discussed that maybe back in September, October, in that we hadn't received the draft back. So we were able to then provide some feedback if they had provided any clarified questions on that. And then after that, then they issued us their findings. So as you can see, and this is the summary of the compliance criterion that was rated. And you'll see the universal standards for special education and then the universal standards for civil rights and general education. And they broke it down by what was implemented, what they deemed partially implemented and if they thought anything was not implemented or not happened. So when, when we look to the special education, there were 15 universal standard criterions that were rated. They were, we were found to have 14 of them implemented. We have one partial, one standard in which it was partially implemented and that was in professional development. And what they, they did cite us on for that was that they felt as though out of many of the criteria, one of the pieces was that some of the state and federal special education laws, ways of analyzing and accommodating diverse learning and methods of collaboration weren't provided to every staff member. So in our corrective action plan, what we've done is we've already got that scheduled and I'm gonna be going out and be presenting to the staff, all staff, in all seven of our buildings before, before spring. So that we'll have that completely adjusted. And then on their civil rights, you can see that there was 18 universal standard criteria rate. 13 were implemented or were partially implemented. And one was what they considered not implemented. So under our partial implementation, it was the warning prevention and intervention. And with that, they found that our handbook was up to date, our policies were up to date, but our full plan had some areas in which that they wanted to see a little bit, some language included in and built up. So our team is already actively working on that. Presentations have been given out. Mary Gans has provided updated presentations to all of our leadership team. Another was the CR Tennessee Student Discipline, and that really the part of the, the piece of the partial implementation was they found in a few instances, some of the written language out about letters of student hearings and student disciplines either weren't fully documented or they were missing some of the elements. So again, we have already rectified that and we've married it on and provided in the spring, last spring, she did updated training on student discipline. We did it at the administrative council this summer as well as going out to all of them, ensuring all the administrative staff in every building has been provided with that. And it was just a new standard, a new regulation that was implemented, became effective as of November 8th. So last week and just at our last administrative council meeting, Mary was able to provide us with that update as well. And then there was CR 24, which is a curriculum review, and that's ensuring that all of the curriculum is vetted, ensure that there's no bias and there's equity in that. And again, partially implemented, a lot of work has been done with that. We have a nice team under Dr. Italian's leadership. And they were just found that through their interviews and all that, it hadn't, that they didn't deem that it meant the level of that every single teacher in the district had the ability to do that. So that is also well underway for corrective action. And then the last personally implemented was CR 25, and that's the institutional self-evaluation. And it's, they're looking at everything. They're looking at extracurricular activities, athletics, academics, equity, discipline and all of that. And they just, they have a more of a particular template that they wanna see and particular standard. So while we do that, when we report out our M-PAS student performance and all of those pieces, it, we just need to make sure that we have it. The way we're documenting it to the department will be more comprehensive than one template. So we're actually already working on that as well. And then though we had one criteria we found not implemented, and that was last year's graduating class. They found that the seniors were, I think that's because of the snow and all the different days, but we, no, forgive me. The calculation of the days where the seniors were released more than 12 days before the rest of the students. So again, we have worked on, forgive me for stating that. I know that we've looked at and worked with the high school team and to ensure that, that the academic, the seniors' academic days will continue three additional days for this school year to make sure that we meet this criteria.
Oh, that was well, I can't wait.
So under next steps, the action plan was submitted. And so we've submitted the document, so we've already submitted to the Department of Education. We're waiting for the approval. We haven't heard back on that because what they do is they review it. They also will ask if they, you know, if they have any clarified questions before they approve it. And then once it's approved, then we can start uploading our corrective action plan and any progress monitoring, any documentation we have to show the work that we've done. I'm very happy to report I have quite a large file of documents to upload because much of that work has already, already been done or is well underway. We will do, continue to ongoing progress monitoring through that. And then once that they feel as though all of our, all of our documentation's wanting to show that we have rectified and completed, fully implemented those criterions, they will, they will issue a final report to us. And then I'm sure we'll be happy to come back and report out all those findings.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Questions for Dr. Lumbergh? That is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on our, our agenda is update as superintendent.
So we will first discuss the student discipline, the significant amendment that Jones just mentioned. I'll turn this over to Mary Gans to speak.
So the Massachusetts Legislature just recently amended Mass General Law Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4 to change the way school districts are allowed to handle. to change the way school districts are allowed to handle the vast majority of student discipline matters. The amendment applies to all student discipline matters that don't involve possession of a controlled substance, possession of a dangerous weapon, assault on a staff member, or a student charged with felony. So it's every other discipline matter, which is, you know, the day-to-day discipline matters generally. The amendment requires all schools to use alternative remedies such as restorative justice, mediation, conflict resolution before schools are allowed to suspend a student, whether in school or out of school, unless the school can document and establish that the alternative remedies would be unsuitable or counterproductive, or unless the student's continued presence in school poses a risk of serious bodily injury or serious harm to others while in school. So it is a significant shift. It was actually sort of buried in a 62-page bill that was entitled an act to, I think it was an act to remove barriers to mental health and something like that. There was no indication that student discipline was even part of the bill. There is actually this policy subcommittee we are working on is another aspect of it that involves an amendment to another statute where school committees are required to put together emergency response plans for behavior and medical crises. So we'll be working on that separately. But even DSC, DSC, I, when I found out about it, I thought, where have I been? How did I not know about this? I must have, I mean, really, I was surprised. But I spoke to many other school law lawyers. Everyone was taken aback by it. They just had not heard about it. And even DSC, their first, and I looked through so, so many DSC documents, their first notification about it was on November 4th, and the law became effective November 8. And DSC is has put out a notice that they will be issuing guidance. Guidance will be forthcoming, which we talked about the policy subcommittee. That was their famous phrase during COVID-19. Guidance will be forthcoming. So we don't need their guidance though to move forward. I've met with the, all of the principals and the AC council. And Henry and I actually will be meeting with assistant principals to fill them in on it. So, you know, it is, it is a major shift, but we are adapting to it. And I think, you know, we have a good understanding of it in place right now.
So a quick question, what does this look like in practice? So for example, I know that we're still getting information. So let's say there is a fight at the high school, two students. Are you able to remove the aggressor from the situation? Is that considered suspension, an in-school suspension, or do they have to proceed with their, their day?
They would have to try alternative remedies unless in that situation you could, you could establish and document that one or both students' continued presence poses a serious bodily risk of serious bodily injury. Because if they are elevated and they can't be de-escalated, I mean, we would even try to do that even before this law was passed, you know, we tried to. But if we felt, if the administrators felt like removal was absolutely necessary to preserve the safety of the school, then they could be removed.
Great. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Margaret?
Yeah, I think it was the end of last school year that we had a discussion on restorative justice. And I believe it was said that they were in phase one. And I'm wondering about how that's going, because there seemed to be some pushback in terms of teachers implementing it, and they didn't really have the training and so I'm wondering how that's going and how that fits into.
I'm not overseeing the restorative justice training, but it has been ongoing. I've even participated myself in some professional development sessions on restorative practices with large groups of staff. And I thought it was very positive. I think it is, you know, what do we say? It takes three to five years to fully implement it. And, you know, we have been using restorative practices, you know, even last year at the high school. But we sometimes might, you know, if there was a fight, we might suspend a student, then bring them back in a day or two, and then implement the restorative practices. Whereas with this new law, they're telling us that we need to do that before we might. This new law does not preclude us from suspending students, but it precludes us from doing it before we try these alternative remedies. And if they prove to be unsuccessful, then the more traditional discipline can take place.
I'm wondering how the staff are responding to restorative justice in terms of their ability to implement it in their comfort. I don't have the answer to that.
So just, so as far as the student discipline, we're really talking about restorative circles that would happen with the administration before. So with the teachers, it's really the kind of preventative, right? It's, it's, it's setting up circles and, and talking about things that you would, before you would get to discipline concerns. Once there's a discipline concern, then, then the tier two or tier three circles really is at administrative level. So I don't know if that answered your question, but we are moving on the circles as far as the teachers go. And there's a lot more teachers that kind of step up and want to know more and that are trying them out. We are not at 100%. And as mentioned, that takes, you know, years.
Yeah, I'm wondering how the teachers are feeling about it. That's my concern is how they're responding.
The ones that are doing it are really good. They're getting great feedback. We have two of our trainers, Dr. Santa Wyski and Dr. Curtis Bates, that has been observing and giving feedback. And both of them are saying that the teachers that are doing them are doing it well. And, you know, and the principals are reporting that they're, they're kind of keeping up those practices. So we're moving the needle.
Well, the teachers are doing it, are they volunteering or are they just assigned? So, yeah, so there's lots of people who have volunteered.
Sure.
Just super, it takes time.
Andrea.
So Mary, I guess I was wondering if you have a sense for what the intention is between the amendment to the law? Because sometimes, you know, these are done statewide, and there's rationale, especially maybe because it was in this mental health section or legislation. And, you know, it doesn't always neatly apply to our practices here, but yet we still need to be, you know, follow through with it. Do you have any understanding of the intention behind it, what they're trying to, what practices they're trying to fix?
I'm only, I'm only guessing based on my reading of the legislation is that COVID and other factors, not just COVID, but COVID and other factors have increased mental health needs among students. And that while schools have been really addressing suspension and trying to not suspend students, I think this is just another way to say, we want you to really stop doing that and address these behavioral issues that may have an emotional, mental health, you know, underlying the reasons for it. I'm just guessing at that.
And then they think that the best way to get those mental health needs addressed are within the school. That if they send them home, that there's no attention being paid to it. Because, you know, on one hand, somebody would think, well, if they're sitting in class and they're still amped up, they're not learning. So it's not necessarily time on learning. It's trying to get them other services by not having them leave the building. Is that?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
I just have a concern with not so much the aggressor, but the target of the aggressor now has to sit in school with the person that was aggressive towards them, and it's uncomfortable for them. And now perhaps they don't feel safe. And then their parents don't feel confident sending them to school because, you know, if, when you're home and you have children, more than one, and they are at each other's throats, you send them away from each other and you tell them to cool off, and then we'll talk about it later. And that's sort of been our standard. You know, we separate, we, you know, suspend what, in school, whatever it is. And now I feel like this new amendment kind of takes that off the table. I appreciate having it under the guise of mental health needs with COVID. And I think since COVID, everyone's mental health has been heightened. And everyone's mental health should definitely be taken more seriously than what it has been. But as someone that was bullied and growing up, I think a lot of times it's a salvage, knowing that the aggressor isn't going to be there around the next corner. So I, I'm concerned for those folks, those kids, those families.
Any other questions? Okay, well, we look forward to receiving guidance whenever.
All right, yeah, so the next update, I wanted to inform everyone that we were made aware just recently that Operation Service Division has made a decision to increase the out-of-district cost by 14%. So there, I mean, this is, this is very different and it came at a surprise, especially right now as we're trying to create our budget for FY14, or 24, sorry, not 14, FY24. And, you know, kind of as we've already had plans, like this is going to be over $400,000 in addition. Could be higher. Right now, we're, that's what we're estimating. We've been asked to send letters to legislators. I have sent letters. The copy of my letter is in your yellow folder. But I think that the piece that, that's concerning, they absolutely have the right to do so. They have, it's been an average of 1.87% increase over the last many years. But there is the piece there that says that the methods prescribed by the division in determining prices shall incorporate cost containment standards and shall be fair to both government and units and providers. And I think that that's the concern, that raising it at a 14%, especially when there's cost pressures in many areas, that that was quite a bit of an increase in the, in the last time. So I want to make you aware of it. There will be more to come as we move along and see where this goes.
Is there a justification for such a hike?
So if you look in the letter that I shared with you, there are a few indications. There's the COLA that they are considering as a five-point some increase. And then it does talk about signing bonuses on the second side that they're looking to implement. So to recruit staff. So between the five-point COLA, 5.8, I believe, COLA, and then the signing bonuses they came up with. My next update, I just wanted to let you know that not with the high school students, for the student advisory. And so it's a pleasure to talk with students, as was reported last time in the school committee. Just to let you know, they were, I mean, they talked a lot about ways that we could tweak the social aspect of school. They do want a nice balance between academics and co-curriculars. They talked about how much they liked no golf week, but would like to have the activities expanded throughout the year. Very, very caring group, really concerned with making sure that everyone belongs and doing just making sure they're included. They specifically mentioned the Wampanoan trad dances and would love to have more cultural events. That just helps, you know, everyone just be aware of, you know, other cultures and how to make people feel welcome. They talked about field trips and just being outside in general, and if they could figure out ways to be outside more at the high school, you know, that they would really appreciate that. But that was fun. It was very discussions. We're a very, very kind group to one another, too. It was very nice. The whole, whole session was good. So the announcement I have right now is just that the, we will be giving out COVID tests to all staff and students. We'll give them out right before the Thanksgiving break, right before the winter health, holiday break, sorry. So right before, so that families and staff can have COVID tests before coming back.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Moving right on, routine business approved school committee minutes of October 25th, 2022 is their motion, their come motion. A second, Terry seconds. Any edits or clarifications? None? Oh, we're all here. We don't have to. I know, right? Olive, say aye. Great. Community member reports. Terry?
I have three things to report from the VIPS monthly meeting. This month, Lisa Morton gives an update on, to the board of directors about the mentoring program, which now has about 59 members. They mentor students in grades K through 12. And Lisa spent time explaining how the interviews go with mentors, because it's so great to people volunteering, they want to do it. But to make sure that of the follow-up, so no child, it goes smoothly through the period that that's necessary. And she also said that historically, they were retired people, older people who made up this bulk of mentors. But because people have moved more to the Cape, younger people working at home, the dynamics of that group has changed. So she's happy to see some younger people involved in that. This weekend, there will be an elementary school track meet for all the elementary schools. It's a big deal. On Saturday, all those kids running around having a great time, and they have competitions, but in between schools. But they've ironed it out so that I think everybody's happy just to be there doing it anyway. And the student of the month is Amina Weifenbach. Now I pronounce that the German way. I don't know how she pronounces it, but I have to pronounce it how I knew it should be. She may say Weifenbach. Sometimes they do that. So that was that.
Great, thank you. Any other community member reports?
Yeah, well, I hope we do it right. The learning advisory committee, I think that, to continue the conversation we had the last time, I think it's a matter of how we have students feel comfortable belonging to the school system. There was a particular focus on registering students who come in during the school year. And I don't have to go into detail, right? And the other kind of thing was issues of how students are treated if there are issues. Is that right?
Thank you. Thank you.
So the MAS C conference was last week, and I'm not going to go into detail about some of those sessions that were abbreviated meeting today. But because I was your delegate at the delegate assembly, I just want to let everybody know that all six of those resolutions passed, and there is a report on the website if anybody wants to look at that. And then just also to let everyone know that at town meeting after this, in the reports from the departments, Maureen and I will be making a presentation beginning of the morning.
And then the community member reports. Seeing that, I request for information. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Olive, say aye. Okay, thank you so much. Have a great night and on to town meeting.